City of Nelson Council meeting April the 3rd, 2023. We called meeting to order. Have a moment of prayer. Go on. Oh yeah, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for meeting us, guiding us and directing us in each decision that we make. We ask that you be present this meeting, Lord. Be with our servicemen, our police officers, our EMTs and firefighters throughout our counties, Father God, and keep them safe, Lord. We ask of Jesus. Amen. Dr. Lawrence. For the flag.
I thought it was a meeting in here. I was like, what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Thank you. If I could get a motion to approve our agenda.
I think a motion would prove it.
Can I get a second? Next one, Chrissy, all in favor? You know. Thank you. Chrissy is the first. Now, then. All right, now we have public appearance. Is there anybody that has anything to go over tonight with regards to what's on our agenda?
Well, it's not on your agenda.
And I'm pretty sure no one here, so if you want to stand up and state your name and your address, you can.
My name is Melissa Waller. I live at 116 Nelson Oaks Drive. I'm just here tonight to address the Honorable Mayor of the City Council. I'd like to speak for him on Nelson's ordinances regarding nuisances and noise violations. And these are the two ordinances that I'm referring to. Section 26-31 is the general prohibition. It shall be unlawful for any person to make, continue or cause to be made or continue any loud, unnecessary, unusual noise or any noise that unreasonably or unnecessarily annoys, disturbs, injures or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace or safety of others in the city. And the other section, 2691, is the definitions of nuisance, which means anything within the city that causes hurt, inconvenience or damage to another. And the fact that the act done may otherwise be lawful shall not keep it from being nuisance. The inconvenient complaint of shall not be fanciful or such as would affect only one fastidious taste, but it would affect an ordinarily reasonable person. Any such nuisance may be abated or provided in this article. And section 2692 is the enumeration, which reads, "These things interfering with peace or comfort, sounds, animals or things that interfere with the peace or comfort or disturb the quiet of the city." I believe City Hall is aware of the continued issues that we have in Nelson Oaks subdivision. It's the riding of the ATVs on the city streets and within the tiny yards of the homeowners. I am in contact with the sheriff's office as well regarding the vehicles that are on riding on the streets. I'm asking for the city to address the riding of the ATVs within the city limits and within my subdivision. Nelson Oaks is not a large community. Most of the homes are under one acre. The homes are close together and noise carries. I live in the cul-de-sac and my home is situated in a way that amplifies the noise coming from all the neighbors. We have two neighbors consistently who ride their ATVs in the yards and the street. The noise is extreme. It can last for hours at a time, and it is not even possible to have conversation outside or to even open my house windows without being bombarded with obnoxious noise. It is known that excessive and prolonged noise has negative health effects on people. It also affects those with special needs, mainly autism, and my youngest grandchild is autistic and he lives with... Other cities in Georgia and the U.S. prohibit ATVs from being ridden on the city limits. Sometimes they prohibit them from being ridden on properties of less than three acres. Also, if the property is over three acres, it is further required that they be a certain distance from any residential property lines in order to quell the noise. It is my request that you would consider such an ordinance in order to keep Nelson a quiet community like it has been since I moved here in 2003. I understand the city's desire to maintain Nelson as an inviting peaceful city. The recent trash removal ordinances proves that you desire to see Nelson as a pleasant, clean community, and I hope that you would consider my case and continue to move forward in Nelson.
Thank you. Ms. Melissa, I do appreciate you coming forward. I am familiar with the ordinances. I know that Kelsey probably provided some misinformation to you. I know that we've been in contact with Sheriff, with Lieutenant Downey regarding that, the noise and stuff. I would like to say this, and I'll let you speak to what you've done, but we try not to intervene with people on their own property. With that said, I know that when you reach out to, we have respective IGAs with both counties, and you're in Cherokee. When you have this happening, you have to call immediately and report it for a sheriff to come out and see it. It just can't be your word, right? I know it's been ongoing, but that's the way we have to handle that. And I'll let Lieutenant Downey, if you want to go ahead, I know you've got some information on it. If you want to go ahead and speak to that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I went by and spoke to the homeowners at the residence at 123 Nelson Oaks Drive, which it seems they have, from what I can see, a four-wheeler or a go-kart, and they have a larger ATV or whatever you want to call it. Basically, what I told them is, you know, normally in situations like this, if they're in their yard, there's nothing that the sheriff's office can do that is a marshal's office issue because it isn't ordinance. We don't enforce noise ordinance. That's through the marshal's office. If they're actually out on the highway or on the roadway, then we can do that enforcement. The way I approached them today was, hey, this is a courtesy to you. This is your warning. Normally, when I stop ATVs, just like with the little kid on the motorcycle across the street from you, they get a warning on the first time. Next time, we tow their vehicle. All right? And when I say vehicle, I mean ATV. That's what I relayed to them this evening. He stated that he would stop, that he didn't want any problems, and we don't want to be at somebody's house no more than they want us there. So hopefully, that will fix the issue. If they're riding on the property, I know you discussed the three acres. As far as that ordinance, if it's a noise ordinance, it's got to go through the marshal's office. We won't enforce that. And I'm not going to ask somebody on their own property. It's no different than, you know, when you think about it, there's people get up in other grass during the summertime, early on a Sunday. Well, if you look at the noise ordinance, you're not supposed to do that until, I think, noon. Noon to six o'clock is the time that you're supposed to do that, but people do it all the time anyway. So, you know, just caution when it comes to that. Call the marshal's office if they're riding and it's causing excessive noise in their backyard or whatever the case may be. If it hits the roadway, obviously, call 911. I've noted that in the crime report for this morning.
Thank you, Lieutenant Downey. One question, Council. I know that about, sometimes we talked about ATVs on the road. There wasn't an issue with it. Was it golf carts?
And that's on, is golf carts still aren't supposed to be on the radio or anything like that?
That comes through a special permit through the county in order to drive golf carts on the roadway as well.
Even in the city?
Even in the city.
So have vehicles with license plates with engines on them?
And a licensed driver. That's the bigger issue with me.
Yeah.
Is not letting these children go out here and cause themselves to be put in a bad situation by getting hit by a car.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that. I remember we talked about it. I just didn't remember what we did with it. Does that clarify for you?
Yeah, but do I have the freedom at any time that they make a lot of noise to call the marshal? I mean, do they work regular hours?
We don't have an agreement with them yet, but we are looking into it, and hopefully by May, we will. We needed agreements with both respective counties, and come May, we should, I should have something from Pickens County to put before the council, and then we can look at it and get approval for that.
That would be Pickens and Cherokee, and then it needs to come through the city to the marshal's office.
So if somebody did something tomorrow, just say, I want to take a good time. If somebody was out tomorrow making a lot of noise, I don't have the freedom to call the marshal's office?
The marshal doesn't have the authority to do anything inside city limits.
Well, I thought you said they're in their backyard.
They don't have, the marshal doesn't have the authority to do anything inside city limits because we do not currently have a contract with them.
Your complaint would come through here, which it always would, and if there, because the way that our agreement will be written is that it's going to be on an absentee basis, so your complaint would still come through the city. We would filter those. If we have an ordinance that we can handle, then we will. If it's something that we need to call the marshal out, then we would call the marshal out. And it's going to save a lot of time. Pickens County only has one marshal right now. They're going up to two, but they couldn't be running out here for everybody in Nelson calling, right? So...
So I would just have to come back here and have you to call the marshal?
Yeah, but we don't, like, our noise ordinances right now wouldn't tell somebody that they can't ride a motorcycle or ATV on their own property.
Yeah.
Or it doesn't allow it on city streets, but as of right now, people can ride them on their own property.
And so this would be, may it change?
I don't think that's changing. I don't think so.
They can't ride it on the streets, and that won't ever be legal. But as far as it being illegal to ride in their own yards...
No, I mean, there's just a lot of noise. I mean, that's my complaint.
But the flip side of that, too, is you have people that would also complain about children making a lot of noise. So it's kind of, everybody's going to have their trigger. And I understand you, we've got people behind us that ride them, and it aggravates me sometimes, but my husband has one, so it's, you know, he'll look at me and laugh whenever I say something. If I'm in the backyard and they're running them up and down in their backyard, but it's their yard. You know, it's their yard. They can ride their motorcycle in their yard. They're not on the street.
Okay. You have my rights. All right. Did that answer satisfy?
Well, I know you might like it, but... Well, I know, but I feel like my rights are just being respected with noise that I have to put up with because they're not making noise.
So if we were to agree and write an ordinance for the entire city, that would impact everybody in the city. And the only person that's having an issue with that would be you. I mean, my neighbor's right. I don't have a problem with it. I know, I understand your situation is different from mine. I have a grandbaby that stays with me five days a week, but, I mean, sometimes it wakes her up. But, I mean, it's just, it's kids being kids, and I don't, you know, I don't want to infringe on somebody else's rights. So, but moreover, it is our ordinances and our ordinance. We don't have an ordinance for that right now. So, I mean, hopefully, it'll get calmed down a little bit with not being able to ride on the roads and so forth. And I'll look into it a little bit deeper. I have not done that yet. I know I'm familiar with the ordinances and stuff, but I will look into it a little bit deeper. Okay. All right, next up is number six, approval of our minutes for the March the 6th, 2023 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for March 26th, 2023?
I'll make a motion.
James, second.
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? unanimous, thank you. And then next up is our department reports. Lieutenant Downey, you want to come forward?
Yes, ma'am. Very slow month. One of my guys did do a traffic stop up here, and they had some misdemeanor arrestable offenses that they released them on a citation. And then we can continue to patrol areas that people call in as far as what we call our extra patrols. So just to reassure you a little bit, we're just going to keep an eye on it. Like I said, after my conversation with them tonight, I think that it's going to resolve the issue. I can't say that it's not going to happen again, but I think the frequency and the kids and things like that's not going to happen. So, and then our other extra that either requested through the city or citizens, we have twelve of those, so.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is the mayor's report. There's a couple of things. One, we've kicked off our community garden, spring community garden up here on the hill. And do we have any spots left, do you?
I think there's a few.
It's probably Chrissy's question. I know you're on the board. Is there a couple of spots?
I think there's six.
Okay, so we have six spots available if anybody's interested in that. Thank you for coming out and supporting the community and helping with your tractor and tiller up there. We really appreciate it.
Lots of times.
Yes, lots of times this time of year. Thank you. Next up is our Easter event. It was a huge success. We had a huge turnout. Appreciate all you guys, the efforts you've put in and coming out and helping out and getting things set up and just being there. William was, he wasn't a bunny, but he did do the egg drop for us between him and Chrissy. Matt was our bunny, and he did a fabulous job. I wanted to say thank you to Kim Barr and to Elisa Morathas for helping put it all together and stuffing eggs and just making that happen and being there the entire day for setup and cleanup. Your efforts were really appreciated. Also want to say that again. Yeah, and James Queen, he was, he came out and was greeting people and...
Talking trash like normal.
I think he was a big bunny, but he got the smile.
Yeah. But we, I didn't count the, I did not count the fever, but I will say this, we got pictures, and it was, it was a packed event. The weather cleared up for us.
It's bigger than we've ever seen.
Yeah. And we didn't really advertise for it, other than just right here with multiple signs. So we got down there first thing Saturday morning, though, and found our Edmondson sign literally broke off at the end. Every entire post on the bottom was just snapped into, and it was leaning into the fence. The, it was ripped, just the screws were ripped out of it from the wind. So we got it piled up into a nice, into a nice pile, and I think when we do our work session, we can talk about, I know we've got our master park plan that we need to, we need to work on, and we can talk about maybe what we want to replace that with, but just a heads up on that, we don't, we no longer have a sign.
We actually have a lot of interest in the ball publisher, too. It's running like almost every day right now, which is very different than how it has been.
Yeah. Maybe the cheapest rates are in, that's why. Easter event, the other thing is, let's see, I want to just give a shout out to Evan Howe for sponsoring some gifts and some prize eggs and things like that. So he's always willing to help in the community with anything we have. So a good event. I definitely want to do a little bit more planning for next year and see if we can, see if we can do some stuff that will even make it better, so.
I'll put the Jeep out there, I'll be around.
Yeah, and Chrissy put her Jeep out with the big Easter event thing, and, I mean, we had people from Pickens, from Pickens Street and the neighborhoods and everything, so it was really good. We had some inquiries about movies in the park for the spring and summer, and I am looking into that now, so we definitely, I definitely would like to bring that back. Probably, again, we didn't do, we didn't do hamburgers and hot dogs for this event, the Easter event. We did cupcakes and cookies for the kids. It was really geared more for the kids than anything. And with movies in the park being later, you know, with our time change and stuff, with it being later, I think we're going to do something like that. We may offer some pizza slices. We've talked to Domino's or somewhere to get some special pricing on that, but we may just offer some slices of pizza and some popcorn or something. So, but we do plan on doing a few events this spring and summer. And then, let's see, the next thing is, I'd like to set a date for our master park plan. I'd like to set a work session that would look at our master park plan. So right now, I'm looking at 4:25. Check your calendars and tell me if that will work for you guys. That would be a, 4:25 would be a Tuesday. 6:00 PM or y'all want seven? It's not going to be a long one.
Can you stay?
Yes, all right. It won't be, I'm going to try to keep it to about an hour, hour and 15 minutes. I'm going to have an agenda for it, much like we do this one here. We'll go through. I've got a meeting with Miranda set ahead of time, so we'll be able to lay everything out for everybody, and everybody will have a packet that we're going through, so it should move a little bit faster.
Seven would be better.
Okay, so 4:25, 7:00 PM. Does that work for everybody? James?
Yeah.
Okay. Then 4:25, 7:00 PM it is. And then I will, I have employee reviews for 4:07, 4:06, starting at 8:30 AM. Is there anybody that would like to sit in with that, on me? Sit in with me on that? James?
William?
It's going to be 4:06 at 8:30 AM.
I'm tired.
It's okay. I just didn't know if anybody else wanted to. It's coming, this Thursday.
This Thursday.
We can play it by ear.
I think I can.
Okay. Well, we'll send you a message and let you, and keep you up today, so, and then I'll budget it.
Because it's my baby's second week.
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for me with regards to the things that we just went over? Amy?
No.
All right, then we'll move on to finance, and Miranda is out of town this week. Did she send her stuff or do you know?
I just printed all the stuff.
Okay, yeah, she just printed all the stuff. Do you guys want to go over on your own or do you want us to?
It's just the balances on this one.
It's just the balances, so you guys can take that with you and review. If you have any questions, let me know. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, number eight, sanitation department cart tipper price increase. So Kelsey, I know you've been working on that. I'll let you.
There was a price increase from the original estimate, what about $500. Original price was $6,023.03. New price, $6,581.81. I just knew, I just wanted it approved to put in the book just because it's lost funds.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a huge difference, but, and we already discussed it, but just wanted it on record.
So can I get a motion to approve the new price of $6,581.81 for the cart tipper? That's including the price increase?
I'm making a motion to approve the new price, $6,581.
And second, James, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next up is the kitty park tree removal. We've had a couple of meetings on this one here.
This is Gonzalez's estimate.
We've got Gonzalez's estimate down here, which is...
This was to cut down the three back trees, $1,500, or to take all the trees down for $2,000, $2,500. So that does not include the stump removal, that is just to take the trees down.
So I didn't want homework on this one here and...
Next estimate.
Oh, go ahead.
But I'm just saying, this is the only one for the, this one's, I mean, I don't even want to quote on it, and then Chrissy has it on somebody, too.
Yeah, I wanted to just...
Bubba Holcomb came out, David came out, I can't, on Brand's Friday today. I think it was Friday. And gave an estimate to do the grading, and he said he could take the trees out while he was doing the grading and remove the stumps, like, just actually take the whole thing out, not grind them down. So there's a separate price. There was a removal of three trees discussed and removal of the stump, not ground, actually to dig them out and haul them off. So those three trees in the back, to take the trees out and remove the stumps, was $2,800 or $2,850, and the grading was $5,000.
And that's add or, and remove the brand that's in there. So I met with Jason Cheshire last week. I had him come out. We reviewed the stuff Michael Kidd sent out. Michael Kidd's recommendation was to remove all the trees. We did, we agreed we didn't want to remove them all. Plus, if we hold off on the front two, there are the power lines. The power company may help us with removal of those. The three on the back, the first one is clearly got marks in it where it's, it's splitting. The first tree on the fence line is in distress, and the last tree is, has reached its maturity. It will continue to grow and girth, which will make, include branches, which will make the branches head out and erupt, and it has stress signs as well. We had talked about leaving that one, but I'd like to propose a better option of removing all three of those trees along the front one and the two on the fence line and going ahead, once we get them removed, the stumps removed and it graded, to go ahead and plant a more mature tree, which Chrissy says that she can, she's got some folks that may be able to help us with planting, with giving us a more mature tree for a good price. And we've got all the equipment to plant that one ourselves, and granted, it will take a little bit longer for it to grow in and give us the shade we want. And in the meantime, we could use a shade, we could purchase a shade from either Southeast or from somewhere else to put some shade up to shield our equipment. But doing it now...
They're expensive shade canopies.
Yeah, they're not expensive. Doing that now would benefit us because we would not have playground equipment in and our fence up and everything done, and then try to come in and take a tree down of that size that's probably going to split when you go to take it down anyway. So with that background, I spoke with William Taylor. He and Chrissy both came out, took a look at those trees with us. We looked at what's there. Currently, we have quite a bit of marble in one area, just big pieces.
There's also some big metal piece sticking up there we saw the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's supposed to actually take that concrete out over that side and sign it all down.
This is, now, this was Bubba Holcomb who came out and took a look and can do it right away, and he went and met with William Taylor, and William, I'll let you go ahead and have that conversation.
It's actually going to pull the log, bring a little bit more of the hot one up there in the corner, not just try to get that marble out, so leave a few loads of dirt, get the hill, like I said, worked out, probably three or one, so it can be mowed and all. We talked about the hump of concrete over in the front corner. Bring all of that out, take the sign down, everything.
And so his estimate, as you, and it's in here as well.
So how many trees would be left?
Two, but we would plant a more mature tree on that back corner.
You're talking about the trees on the roadside of the...
The ones that are up against verticals, right?
The ones that will land will be on the roadside.
Yeah. Those trees, you're not going to have kids climbing on, and the weight, the court, so Jason Cheshire's in Arborist, he's a University of Georgia graduate, but his thing is, is when they reach this age, these trees have already been limped a lot, and they already have stress cracks in them, and if you get a kid out there and they're wet and you, and that's the same thing Michael Kidd was saying, they start climbing on those, they can break them any minute. You can limb them up enough to get by, but then you have the issue of going in and replacing it, taking the stump out with the new equipment in, the new fence in and all that. I mean, that's my fault.
We might install playground, I think, if anything.
Yeah, playground, we want to install, yeah. And Bubba didn't say you could accommodate our schedule, so I sped it down. Anybody want to have any questions?
Whatever William and Tom's fine, right?
So...
Are you going to be cutting one?
Well, I think that's what I'm thinking. I would, I think you're going to end up...
You are?
I would cut all of them, yeah.
Well, I think you're going to have to, you're going to have issues with the new fence that's there, and then working around any of that equipment and trying to get the stumps out later on. You can get all five of them out now and plant mature trees and work it, shade canopies up while the new trees grow, like inexpensive shade canopies, $15,000 or something like that. But you can get, shaking it, these are a couple hundred bucks on Amazon, but have them there to live.
I'd rather leave a couple of them at least, somebody to get under.
Well, you can leave the ones on the, you can leave the ones on the roadside, but they're, those trees are going to have to come out eventually, doing this is why. Those two on the roadside are in the same condition. They've got, they've been limbed so much that they have, they have stress fractures in them, so that means your wood is splitting. So at some point, you have a lot of rain, and then you have a high wind, you're going to have limbs in the street or in the power lines on our new equipment out there. So that's the problem, that they've reached maturity. And the only thing that happens now is they just get heavier.
You just said we were leaving them, right?
Yeah, we are for right now, because they're not on this bid, but eventually, we will need to take them down, so, for safety reasons.
Yeah.
So you want to take, you want to do a motion to approve this bid for local grading and hauling?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the $7,850 for the, regrade the playground so the water won't, will run to the side, and also rework the lower slope so it can be mowed? Pricing will include the dirt and the hay and seed for reseeding that, those areas that need it, and then the removal of the three trees as discussed, removal of the, and removal of the stump, not ground but dug out and hauled off, for $7,850.
And having to remove the concrete, the sign up there.
Yes. And I'll, and I'll have him go ahead and, I'll put this right here when it, before And I'll have him go ahead and, I'll put this right here when it, before I sign, so removal.
Can we have them, whatever he grinds, give us at the community hall?
He's not grinding, he's taking it up.
He's not doing any of the...
He's digging all the, and hauling it off.
The limbs and everything?
Yeah.
We can ask.
The guys have a smaller tipper, I think.
Yeah. We just have a...
I have somebody that can bring you all the chips you want.
We're having a hard time finding them.
I've got somebody, I'll get with y'all after.
Okay. You got any thoughts, you guys?
Yay!
Because he has to come all the way up here to the dump and...
Yeah.
To dump them, so...
Right, that's why, well, that's where I was thinking this would be a win-win.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gonzalez was going to...
Because we need them, and you're trying to, and to get rid of them, so.
Yeah. So three trees right now, and then the Holcomb grading. So can I get a motion to approve the $7,850 for Holcomb grading?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
William Taylor?
Seven thousand eight hundred and fifty, and no adjustments, so without our council approval.
Understand. And can I get a second?
There you go.
James, all in favor? You now, okay. New business, sealed bids for NEO2-136, the property up there beside Marcia Heaton's. Before I start, I'll let, I'll go ahead and ask, I'd like to ask the council. We have a bid that came in late, they were supposed to be in by noon today, and we received a bid at 3:09 PM. Do we want...
It's Friday.
Or Friday, sorry, 3:31:28. Do we, do we have a seat? Do we want to accept this bid?
How many bids do you have?
Three.
Two, and then this one came in at three, and not twelve.
It won't hurt us to merge.
So I think you've got, do you need to vote on that?
Yeah, I'm saying, you know.
Okay, so they're just in agreement. Just make a note of it.
I mean, is it more of the property owners adjacent to it?
Kind of.
And I want to ask this, with regards to these bids, Jeff, do we have to, can we, can the council accept any bid that they want to, this package, these packets?
Yes.
Or does it have to be the lowest bid?
Highest.
Or the highest?
For sale of real estate, presumably the highest. For sale of real estate, it would presumably be the highest, because the conditions are all the same across the board. So you would, you would need to accept the highest bid.
Okay. All right, so the first bid, I'll open, I'll open the bid.
If you accept any of them, you don't have to accept that.
So first bid, 3/24, was, we received it on 3/24. Jonathan Schooler, I would like to make a cash bid offer on land located at parcel NEO2-136 for a thousand dollars.
Which is the site, John, that's good.
It's Marcia's house. Do we not get this, do we not, he owns Marcia's house?
Yeah, but I don't think I'm going to tell you all who.
Okay, sorry.
I don't know who they are, but...
The next one is a sealed bid received, 3/31:23.
Why not sealed, something like that?
There you go. Thirty-one twenty-three. I, Alan Hilliard, officially bid twenty-five hundred on Pickens County Tax Parcel, NEO2-136, point two-four acres located in the city of Nelson, Georgia. Describe and be booked six fifty-three, page four hundred, Pickens County records. Alan Hilliard, twenty-five hundred.
That's down here, right?
Just the one at Marcia's.
So when I've asked Marcia Heaton's mom's place.
On Pickens Street?
The one you can't tell them?
You know, for Brandon.
But you can't do anything with it, because it's in the building. Right now, it's just a liability, because the city ends it, the city's having a major...
Next bid, this is the bid that came in on 3/31, 3:09 PM. Thomas Clark Stansel. I'm prepared to offer a bid of $7,500 for the Pickens County Tax Parcel, NEO2-136 on Pickens Street. I live directly across the park from the parcel, and my intentions would be for it to be left open, unvenced space to preserve the view from my home. The only other possible alterations I envision would be planting some flowers, trees, shrubs on the lot in the future, and I would be open to working with the adjacent property owner for, for a septic field easement.
These are bones good. They're already bad, though.
You're going to see your...
I don't think that's, I think that's Jeff Stansel's daughter. This is, that might be the son. But that's not who the bid had, the son that he did.
So Thomas Clark Stansel for seventy-five hundred, who lives directly across from the property, and then...
Another one of the ones on the...
And then Alan Hilliard, twenty-five hundred dollars. And... He's got his name again.
Jonathan Schooler.
I should just let you know. Jonathan Schooler, four thousand dollars. The highest bid would be seventy-five hundred, which is more than the four thousand we have into it. So are you prepared to take it?
He's also going to give them an easement for...
Yeah.
For the...
Any questions before? Are we prepared to take a vote?
Yeah.
You're going to, for the seventy-five hundred?
No, for the thousand.
No, for seventy-five? I know it's April Fool's, it's this week, but Lord, it's still on. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the offer from Thomas Clark Stansel for seventy-five hundred dollars for the parcel?
I make a motion.
So James?
Say it.
Nathan? And you now, oh, all in favor? You now, there you go, okay. Next up is the, is the safe dig month proclamation, and we have, what was your name again?
Carol Millsap.
Mr. Carol Millsap here with the power company, and he wants to show us...
A sign you want, you want from the owner that I...
A big old banner, yes. Yeah, a big banner. So the best part of this, we need to get it, we have to have a picture, okay? Anyway, first of all, Lori Jones says to tell you all hello, she couldn't meet here. She's done the other ones. So anyway, I, for those, those of y'all that don't know, I work with Georgia Power Company in Canton, and just, I serve on the board with the Georgia Utility Coordination Council, which is a collection of all the utilities throughout the state. Phone, anything, cable, anything else you can think of. And we help with legislation throughout the entire state. One of the things that we do, we support, we're, one of our partners is Georgia 811, which I'm ripping their shirt here. Well, they gave it to me at the conference, so I had to wear it, right? We, we're partners with them, and so they, they proclaim April is safe digging month. And you're going to have a great time to, I know Bubba, so he knows all about locate tickets. So as he starts doing demolition with stumps, I'll make sure he calls a locate ticket in. So then, anybody, some people aren't quite sure about the dig law, Georgia dig law, you can pull it up on the internet. If you see one of your neighbors planting a tree, if you put anything more than a shovel in the ground about this deep, you need to get a locate ticket. It'll, it'll protect you and protect your kids. You never know if, if electricity, especially within my field, if it's been buried underground and then somebody comes along and grades it off, and it may be this deep, this deep. You just don't want to see somebody get hurt, obviously, I understand that. So if you see one of your neighbors out there, it doesn't cost, it's free, just call 811. So there's the signal.
And do you want your picture tonight, while council here?
Yeah, it'd be fine, if you're towards the end, we can wait till afterwards.
Yeah, that's afterwards, you mean. Y'all have a minute afterward to get a picture, please.
Sure.
Thank you for, for that. Next up is our storm drain proposal. It's a, I see storm drain proposal, Barry Harpers, and I see. Have you guys had a chance to look at this? Looked this over?
A little bit.
Okay. So this is for, this is for, he's got phase one here, but this is for the hillside.
This is just like the last one, because that's the two, isn't it?
Same, but this is for the... This is for the proposal for the hillside, which is, it's actually our phase two and our, for our projects. Existing stormwater infrastructure associated with hillside in effort to upgrade and improve drainage, and estimate, estimate eliminate potential flooding of existing residential structures. Hopefully, it will also help with some of the, with some of that wash that we have there coming down Cherokee Street, so.
So is he going to address Cherokee Street first, or Larry and Frill and Miss Hanger, or...
So it'll be hillside down through Cherokee. So that phase one is the conceptual layout and line, we'll have a meeting, and then, if, you got, and I don't know if you want to have some time to look this over, but we don't have to vote on it tonight, if you don't want to, if you want to have some time to vote, to look it over, I could invite, since we're going to be doing a planning session on the 25th, I can see if Barry can come down and actually talk with us about this too, so we can put it into our planning. Would that be good with you guys?
Yeah, I think that's...
Yeah, there's, I mean, he's got a breakdown of the fees in here, but I know that there's going to be questions in here that I don't, that I don't have, so...
He needs to spend, it's like roughly twenty-one, twenty-two thousand plus time and materials for the, for the use of that project.
Yeah. And again, once we, once he lays all the, you know, he laid all this out for us, then I would like to request the council to approve an IGA with the Cherokee County to help facilitate this as well, and to help us get better. They'll do a nice bidding like they did on this one down here.
Is he getting drawings already ready, or?
I don't think, I think that he wants us approved first, because this is the question. I think that that's what all of this was for, was just for him to proceed, like he's got to get approval for each project. Yeah. So this is just the approval, it's not a call, so if you, we can go ahead and vote on this out, the approval for the, for him to do the consulting, this is just his agreement. We can go ahead and approve this tonight, then I can invite him to, to the 4/25 meeting to go over the project, and, and I know that that'll encompass the, the site plans and stuff like that, but he hasn't started those yet.
We've had to do this with every project.
Yeah, this is just the concept of it.
He's scheduled set out ahead of time.
The council basically says, hey, we approve, we approve MAXIS Engineering.
Right now, all we've had done is the survey on everything, he's had the survey.
Yes.
Build construction plans.
Because he sent them directly to us, just so that there wasn't...
Yeah, basically, what he's saying is, phase one, that they'll prepare a conceptual preliminary layout that will, for the approval of the city, using the new survey that was dated December the 28th. They will attend monthly meetings, the second Tuesday of each month with the city, which is, should be Monday, it's going to be the Monday, not Saturday, Tuesday, so, yeah, so we'll maybe change that, but, but the mayor and the city representatives to review and discuss the progress of the project. Phase two of it will, once the conceptual, conceptual site plan is approved by the city, then they'll prepare design drawings, seventy-five percent complete, incorporating the site descriptions, details for a better understanding of the site work that will be required for construction. They will prepare a design grade and drainage plan to accomplish the project goals set forth by the city, including identifying required sidewalk and turn lane, horizontal and vertical geometry. And I'm assuming that that is that piece coming off, where hillside comes down and comes on to Cherokee. So...
This ain't going to address the bottom of the hill, though, is it?
Should address all that, because it's, that's the second piece. And then the third piece is where they'll come across, they'll take, go from Miss Ingraham's and go under the, under, under the road and go over to the drainage, the storm drain that goes behind the old Rebecca Lodge. So that's, that's phase three, School Street in there, and that'll hit that one. Right now, my understanding is, is there's something coming across from where all that kudzu is up at the top, across from Miss Ingraham's? If you're going, if you're going up Cherokee this way, there's that kudzu field up there. There's something coming down there, it goes under the road and dumps out into that hole at Miss Ingraham's, and then supposedly goes under, they think that's clogged. And James, you may know more about it than I do.
Could be, coming from Nathan's field up there, the old hill, you know, drains...
It does, it funnels down.
It runs over the road, down through Cherokee, Terry Or. See, that thing needs to be jerked down there, new piece, put in a bigger one.
He will, so they'll prepare...
That's how leave pipe running from the old maintenance farm stuff. Yeah, well, they ain't going to touch that.
No, they'll leave that place, and then they'll just start it. That one will, phase three will happen next one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to tear all that out, it'd be a mess. They'll prepare a design hydrology calculations and stormwater management to be implemented with the grading plan that will show the required pre and post basin, stormwater calculations to analyze the existing pipe system and make recommendations on stormwater mitigation. With the approval of preliminary site grading and utility plan, the MAXIS Engineering will develop a full set of construction documents, a hundred percent complete, and ready for bidding. That will include a cover page with all pertinent site construction information, just like they did for the last one. So basically, you remember when we did a, we approved this for this last storm thing, but it's basically, he approved, he'll provide the drawings, he'll do a final site plan showing the site layout, as well as required improvements throughout the development, final grading and drainage plan to accomplish the project goals, including identifying acceptable roadways, grades, and drainage design, a final utility plan utilizing a site layout for utility tie-in points, and utility relocation as identified on the survey as required. Storm drainage profiles, including a pipe chart for the storm drain profiles, identifying the twenty-five year and a hundred year hydraulic grade lines as required by the project. Three-phase, three, he'll provide a three-phase erosion, sediment, and pollution control plan along with a specific site, site notes as required, utilizing all state-approved best management practices, BMPs, to satisfy the Georgia stormwater requirement. These drawings will include the state-provided National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System in PDES notes, details, and any special requirements pertaining to the specific watershed, site-specific construction notes and details incorporating pertinent specifications. And then phase three, construction and engineering support. MAXIS will provide construction and engineering support once the contractor has been selected. We assume that Cherokee County will oversee the project, however, changes, modifications may be required once construction begins. Additionally, MAXIS will assist the county with RFP and RFI received from contractors during bidding process. This work will be completed in a timely manner, on time and material TNN basis per the applicable fee schedule attached. So he's got the estimated budget here, roughly ten to twenty percent of the overall project cost, considering MAXIS is unaware of the city's capital improvement budget expenditure timeframe we propose to complete our professional services will be on time and material-based. A fee schedule developed specifically for the city is attached. MAXIS eliminates, estimates the following budget for the aforementioned scope of services. Phase one, fifty-five hundred, phase two, sixteen thousand, and phase three, that's timing, is it timing material, he said?
Timing material.
Yeah. I think the last one, we approved a budget, he asked for just a, we gave him a blank thing for like thirty thousand dollars, which was not even, not even ten percent of the project, so.
He's always very...
He's always very upfront, and with any changes and stuff. And I like MAXIS Engineering, because not only do they, they work well with us, but they, he's, he's up to date on all of the changes for storm shed, for our watershed with the state, and we can run everything that we have through North Georgia Regional Commission. This will count as one of our things with him as well. This will count as one of our things within this one. So with that said, can I get a motion to approve this MAXIS Engineering consulting agreement, consulting service agreement as outlined as I've just read?
For that project.
For, for the phase, yeah, for the stormwater phase two project. I know this is a mouthful, so, sorry. So, so let's see, James, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, Chrissy? All in favor? Okay. And could you make a note to invite him to our 4/25 meeting just to go over any motions that the council have? That, that way they'll have time to review this and ask questions because it'll be on our council free. Next up is our IGA for our tree removal with Pickens County. Let's see, thanks to Mr. Bill Wood, who came out and we had a conversation and he jumped right on it and, and sent this over. So Kelsey, have you had any additional conversation with him or?
The cost, it's always been project-based.
Yeah, cost is project-based, but they are willing to help with that at a, at a actual cost basis and not, you know, charge us alarmingly. So it'll be better because Highway 5 has a lot of trees that are leaning, damaged, dead, so, but what we need to get started is this IGA with Pickens County to, to get that started, so.
This is still in draft form.
Yeah.
I just haven't, I thought they told us it's okay.
Yeah. And it says, I mean, I don't think there's anything, I, I went through this, there's really nothing. I sent it to you, but I didn't have time for you to-
We responded like a couple of hours ago.
Okay.
Did you?
Probably right, right after.
I said, it looks good to me.
Yeah, I said, like, I didn't see anything out of the-
Sending a trash.
No.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
It just, they're just charging the cost that it, that it costs them and it's only a request to the city, so.
Yeah. So can I, with that said, can I get a motion to approve the IGA for tree removal with Pickens County?
I'd like a motion.
James, and can I get a second?
I'll say.
David, all in favor? You know, and can I get a motion to approve?
I was going to say, I knew that one, but-
I'll say.
James and James.